I'll now call the meeting's order. To those that are here, thanks for coming, and to those at home, thanks for watching. Let's get going.
Good evening. Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551 Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, November 12, 2019, at 5:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Would everyone please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. We thank you for the many blessings we have in this nation and in the City of Brownsville. And, Lord God, tonight, we humbly ask for your wisdom, and specifically for our mayor and our city commissioners, our department heads, and everyone who's presenting anything here tonight. We also ask for your wisdom and direction for our national leaders, our state leaders, and county leaders. And, Lord, we ask that we do what needs to be done here in the City of Brownsville to receive your blessings. We know you desire to give them to us, and we desire to be obedient to you, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible)
The proclamation for Hubert R. Hudson Elementary School will be read by Commissioner Mungia. If you would, please come up to the front.
Everybody, come on up. You're here, might as well come up.
Welcome. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Hubert R. Hudson Elementary School. Whereas Hubert R. Hudson Elementary is located at 2980 FM 802 in Brownsville, Texas, Hubert R. Hudson Elementary, in partnership with parent and community stakeholders, is committed to the empowerment of students to become lifelong learners and productive citizens in a highly scientific and technologically advanced global society. Whereas approximately 750 students from pre-kinders, three-year-olds through fifth grade, are enrolled at Hubert Hudson Elementary, staff and students are led by Principal Rachel Ayala, Assistant Principals Maria Isabel Ibarra and Victor Trujillo, and Dean of Instruction Nilda Martinez. Whereas on September 26, 2019, the United States Secretary of Education announced the designation of Hudson Elementary as the 2019 National Blue Ribbon School. The coveted National Blue Ribbon Schools Award affirms the hard work of educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging and engaging content. Whereas the U.S. Department of Education recognized Hudson Elementary under the exemplary Achievement Gap Closing Schools Performance Category for being among the state of Texas' highest-performing schools in closing achievement gaps between the school's subgroups and all students. And whereas the Brownsville City Commission recognizes the commitment to excellence by Hubert R. Hudson Elementary School students, parents, faculty, staff, and administration to earn the National Blue Ribbon School designation. School administrators would like to thank Mr. Bill Hudson, whose father is the namesake of the school. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Hubert R. Hudson Elementary School and encourage the residents of Brownsville to prioritize the education of our future leaders today for the promise of tomorrow. Done on this, the 12th day of November, 2019. Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you all so much. Great job.
The next proclamation we will be presenting is for the GIS Day 2019 will be read by Commissioner Neese.
A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating November 13, 2019, as GIS Day 2019. Whereas the City of Brownsville recognizes that an understanding, use, and application of geospatial technology is crucial to operating our infrastructure, sustaining our natural resources, and stimulating economic growth. And whereas there is a need to promote geographic information systems, awareness, education, and technical training, to use this rapidly developing technology to its full potential. And whereas having a day of GIS activities open to students, citizens, and government leaders will help promote STEM education and inspire others to a higher calling to use technology for good. And whereas the City of Brownsville is committed to utilizing GIS to inform decision-making and better serve its residents, and make useful geographic information open and easily available to the public as a platform for innovation. And whereas the City of Brownsville acknowledges those that have chosen GIS as their profession or as part of their discipline to improve the lives of our citizens, now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby designate November 13, 2019, as GIS Day 2019, and encourage the residents of Brownsville to celebrate the technology of geographic information systems for the benefit of the community. Done on this, the 12th day of November, 2019. Congratulations.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, citizens. My name is Alvaro Silva. I am the GIS Coordinator for the Enterprise Applications Department. Thank you for the time. Thank you for the recognition. The GIS Working Group, there's a couple of us missing, but it's kind of cold outside. We'll be joining the world in celebrating GIS Day by hosting an event tomorrow at the Brownsville Event Center from 9:00 AM to noon. If time permits, we encourage you to join us. City staff will be sharing their work with the community, city employees, Brownsville PUV staff, and Cameron County. GIS Day is about celebrating the GIS professional and about digitally sharing information, collaborating, and learning in order to tell stories through GIS. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next proclamation we have is for Small Business Saturday, which will be read by Commissioner Nordi Stalansky. Oh, Pisanja?
Sorry, the mayor has...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is anybody gonna accept this? Or is anybody gonna... Hey! All right. Okay.
A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating Saturday, November 30, 2019, as Small Business Saturday. Whereas the government of Brownsville, Texas celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, are responsible for 64.9% of new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. Whereas, small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. Whereas 96% of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go to small, independently-owned retailers or restaurants that they have not been to before, or would not have otherwise tried. Whereas Brownsville supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby designate Saturday, November 30, 2019, as Small Business Saturday, and further call upon the citizens of Brownsville to support local small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Done on this, the 12th day of November, 2019.
Small Business Saturday is a nationwide movement to support our local businesses. So I encourage you and all the community to go out and shop local and support our small businesses in Brownsville, Texas. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Pete Ramires here? I don't recognize him without the karate uniform.
I don't see him.
Yeah, no. Okay, then I guess we'll pass, and hopefully maybe we can do it next month?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
The next proclamation is for the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley Chess Team. If y'all would please come up. This will be read by Commissioner Cowan.
Okay. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley Chess Team. Whereas, for a second year in a row, the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley Chess Team was crowned the Texas Collegiate Super Finals Champions after dominating their opponents, Texas Tech University and the University of Texas at Dallas on October 19th and 20th. And in fact, UTRGV repeated their victory from last year, with both their A and B teams taking first and second place, respectively, making the Vaqueros Chess Team back-to-back state champions. And whereas, the A-team members include Camille Dragun Grandmaster, junior accounting major from Gorzol Wielkopowski, Poland, Andre Stukopin Grandmaster, graduate student in math from Rostov, Russia, Vladimir Belos Grandmaster, junior accounting major from Moscow, Russia, and Irakli Baradze International Master, freshman computer engineering major from Tbilisi, Georgia. And B-team members include Ulvi Bara Rani Grandmaster, graduate student in information technology from Baku, Azerbaijan, Carlos Havia Grandmaster, graduate student in computer science from Havana, Cuba, Felix Inohosa International Master, junior economics and finance major from Barinas, Venezuela, and Yannick Reges International Master, senior computer engineering major from Paris, France. And whereas the UTRGV A-team dominated the competition with three match points and 12 points on the board, the UTRGV B-team and Texas Tech A-team also each garnered three match points, but the UTRGV B-team narrowly succeeded them with 10 and 1/2 points compared to their nine board points. And whereas, the team is inspired to perform at the top of their game by Coach Bartek Masaja Grandmaster, and received beneficial guidance from Program Manager Alexander Mistah and Associate Dean of Students for Student Rights and Responsibilities, Dr. Douglas Stoves. And whereas, the team is the reigning national champion and will travel to Charlotte, North Carolina, to compete at the Pan-American Intercollegiate Chess Championship, the competition being the qualifier for the final four of the College Chess of the President's Cup. If successful, UTRGV will advance to New York City in April to defend their national title for a third year in a row. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby proclaim the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley Chess Team as state champions, and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to celebrate this achievement by the students in our community. Done on this, the 12th day of November, 2019. Congrats, guys.
Yeah! All right. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you all so much for the recognition and the time this evening. Very quickly, we're gonna swap with you. We brought something to leave behind for you. I'll let Coach Bartek and Chita hand it off to you. Thank you. This is a chessboard.
Signatures of all vendors of the chess.
Very cool. Wow. In case y'all missed it, this team is not only the very recently crowned two-time state champion, they're the current back-to-back national champion. So they'll be on their way to defend their national championship very soon. They also have chess lessons every Wednesday, most weeks of the year, and a summer chess camp here in Brownsville. So the team is based in Brownsville. So we're very happy to have them here for you. Great job, guys. Fantastic achievement. Go for the trifecta.
Good luck in New York.
Yes, luck.
Next, we have a presentation, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Partnership.
Abby is age seven. She had just moved from Kansas to Brownsville and was going through a bit of a culture shock. She was struggling with the new structure and making new friends at school. The school said that she had made some progress during the school year, but that they were worried that Abby would struggle in the upcoming school year after an unstructured summer. So Abby's mother, Nancy, registered her for a summer day camp program. After a short time, it was apparent that Abby needed a different camp, one that had more structure. Abby's mom found that the Outdoor Adventure Junior Ranger Program and registered her in hopes that a different camp might suit her daughter's needs. In the beginning of summer, the staff struggled constantly with Abby's behavior, but this camp was different than the other camps. And this camp, at this camp, we focused on the outdoors. Every week was geared towards some form of outdoor activity, camping, fishing, hunting, or birding. We did our best to make sure that the participants took away with them a love for the outdoors. Towards the end of summer, we noticed a significant difference in Abby. She was eager to participate in the outdoor activities and had even begun to make friends. Abby had broken out of her shell. When speaking to her mother, she said, "Our whole world changed. That camp gave her a fun place to go that taught her self-restraint and provided structured play." After camp, after the camp, it was the first time in our life that Abby can communicate what she wants. Abby has shown a continued interest in the discoveries she had made during summer camp. Her mother shared that before camp, she had to fight to get her to go on hikes, and it was just constantly complaining. Now, she has a love for the outdoors, she wants to be outside, and she is a much happier person when she's outside.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. Thank you for letting us present to you. This has been a love in the making, and I have, we have a great partnership with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and with Refuge Manager Jessella Chapa, who could not be here, Mr. Boyd Bligh-Haufdi, Bligh-Haufdi, or Boyd, we just love him as Boyd, and then George as well. And George couldn't be here as well, but you'll see him in our presentation. So starting on January 7, 2018, we entered into a partnership to cost-share a position, and so, and that was George, a GS5 full-time employee. And the goal was that the South Texas Refuge Complex expects to engage local residents in outdoor recreation, volunteerism, and conservation through this engagement, and hopes to develop future outdoorsmen and women and conservation stewards. While the City of Brownsville anticipates that the Urban Refuge Wildlife Partnership will help maximize the city's potential as an ecotourism destination, promote stewardship and the value of native habitats and outdoor recreation to local residents, city officials, and tourists. And so, through this partnership, we realized that it was fortuitous timing, and there was a gap in the services that our recreation department could provide. And it just was a part, it was about being a part of something bigger than ourselves. We were able to join an elite group of cities whose focus was similar to ours. And what we face is not just a Brownsville problem, there's many urban cities all over the nation who struggle with engaging local residents in outdoor recreation, conservation, and land stewardship. And then on an individual level, we wanted to teach participants that there's something bigger than themselves, that by collaborating, by experiencing nature in the city, that there's a whole 'nother world and a community that opens up to them. And then, this is Ranger Georgie. And he is the ranger at Laguna Atascosa, but he works with the city. And he's been working with us for about a year now, and he loves teaching outdoor skills, catching fish, gutting it, filleting it, and taking it home to dinner. And his most commonly known phrase is "too easy." So if you ever get a chance to meet him, I was hoping you'd be able to be here today. Anything that you ask him to do, he'll say "too easy, too easy." So, and then get to know this logo, because this is part of our summer camp program. It was extremely popular, and we piloted it, and we'll be going through that again next year. So, we wanted to focus on U.S. Fish and Wildlife's Big Six, getting the kids out into nature. And so we did things from archery and instruction, oops, there's a typo, you know how many times you look over and you'll see a typo, hand-eye coordination, outdoor skills, so communication, tracking, animal identification, birding, which initially they thought the kids and birding was gonna be not so popular, it was our least attended, but they actually ended up really loving it, and developing a love for birding, which is such, we have 500 species of birds in the Rio Grande Valley, so that was great. And just to get the kids to love that. And then we also did some, a lot of fishing, and we even participated in a special needs fishing day. And so, here's a little highlight on kayaking week, and then hunting week. I didn't pick the picture of the boar. I really wanted to, but I didn't want to shock anybody, but yes, there was a big boar that got shown how to be skinned and processed and all of that. And so, it was fantastic, the kids loved it. Camping survivor skills, practicing, you know, their s'more making, fishing. And then others included species and nature ID, archery, going to the beach, it was just too much fun to be had. And so the ultimate focus is going from an urban core to the outdoors, and to assist residents to get comfortable with the outdoors. Sadly, many have never been exposed to camping, fishing, hiking, or other outdoor activities. Cities like Denver experienced that when taking the participants deep into nature for the first time, there was a culture shock and an immediate dislike to nature. So they had to revisit their strategy and choose locations that had city lights and the sounds of traffic, and so that could be seen and heard, so they were just experiencing nature just enough. So our strategy has been a gradual acclimatization to nature, start in our rec center classrooms, increase the skill and familiarity to be comfortable to go to the refuge and experience the outdoors. And so we go from the classroom to a local park, from the park to the refuge, increasing the skills and the experience and the exposure, and building that confidence to, that's the nature skill, the skill set that is required of being an outdoors man or woman. Just are some benefits of camp. As I mentioned, it was a pilot program. We had rave reviews. It ended with the best summer ever for our kids, which you can't beat that. And then just a little bit on our cost-sharing. So, like right now, Boyd has George most of the winter, because that's their busy season and it's our slow season. So we get him most of the summer, they get him in the winter, and then in the fall and spring, we kind of, we share and do some independent activities and tours of the tracks that, they've got five tracks in Brownsville. And so, Boyd, anything you want to mention on?
Well, and in the summer, Georgie's here with you most of the time.
Yeah. So we've got that. And so, this was one on a similar day like today. This was a fall tour last year. And then we just did some analysis. So through this program, so far to date, we've served 5,679. 4,137 were youth, 1,542 were adults, and 340 had special needs, which was about 6% of those served.
Over what time period?
We hired George April 15, I want to say, in 2018. And so, we started that summer, so it was, that was through this fiscal year, so it was about, just a year.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, we've done 15 locations through this partnership. George is working a little bit in Los Fresnos with the schools, as well as our programs. And this just kind of highlights a little bit, we've got our most attendance at the sports park, and they piggyback on some of our events that we do in Linear Park, and of course, Olivetta Park. And then the other one was Lopez High School, we had a big, big turnout there as well. And he does educational seminars, tables, and teaching about different fauna, flora, wildlife. And then our next steps upcoming is we're working on to open up some of the U.S. Fish Wildlife tracks, piloting a lending library so that families who can't afford to purchase camping gear, tents, and whatnot, so that they can come lend it from us, so they don't have to put a whole lot of investment if it isn't successful, and then they can check it out and bring it back. And that way, we can try to support that endeavor into nature. Sorry, I lost the word. And then, of course, enhance our program offerings and see if there's any grants where we can continue this. Our MOU continues through September 2021. And I just want to thank Boyd for being here, and Jessella, they are amazing partners, and I think we've really brought something unique to our residents, and we've heard really, really great things, and we look forward to many good things. But we have a new commission, a lot of you, so we wanted to bring this forward, so as you see this coming forward the next few years, that you're familiar with what this program's about.
Good job. Thank you. Awesome.
Next, we have the public comment period. First person that we have is Mr. Dario Villegas. If you would please come up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. It's Rogelio Maris Dario Villegas. We're here more as representing our subdivision. We just had- We're here more as representing our subdivision, we just had issues with our developer, and, uh, he's basically just washed his hands of everything, so we had to do our, our own HOA and all this. We're with Palmas de Sol subdivision, it's in North Brownsville by 511 and Rio de Sol. And, uh, we have been taking care of it. There's a piece of property, which is our mainly, our main street, and a little section of grass area between our fence and the other neighborhood, Rio de Sol, that the developer still owns, okay? We're having issues because, I thought it was an alley, it turns out it's not, according to planning and, uh, development here in Brownsville, they said that it's, the fence that was built by the developer was built out of code and without a permit. Okay, so we're having issues with the grass in between, the Health Department's been going in and then they started, um, I guess, billing the developer, and we have been able to get ahold of the developer, they have been able to get ahold of the developer, and the owner of the, the development company, we haven't been able to get ahold of him either, and when we do leave messages, nothing gets returned. So we're worried about, since it's, the tract of land is, has its own tax ID and all that, and it's being charged taxes as a vacant lot, if, since he hasn't paid the taxes, he has, he's already backed taxes on one year, if I'm not mistaken. If all that continues with the liens from the Health Department and unpaid taxes, we run the risk of losing our street because it's gonna be put up for auction under taxes, and we're worried about something like, since we don't know if there ever will be an auction, or if they'll ever, you know, foreclose, not foreclose, but hold it, because it is taxable property and unpaid taxes, how are we gonna, how can we fix that? Okay, we can't get ahold of our developer, you know, there's no way of getting ahold of him, and, you know, we've repaired the fence out of our own pocket, not as an HOA, but as our own pocket, we've, the owner, like my fence fell over, I put it back up, I paid, I don't know, about $1,400 to get it done. We've had, uh, potholes in the streets, again, out of our pocket, I paid to get potholes fixed, improvements to our front gate, you know, we had a lot of overgrown grass and all that, we stripped all that up, put rocks, make it look nice, trying to spiff up our neighborhood, and again, out of our pocket. So we decided, again, last year we did an HOA, so we're trying to get all that set up, and, again, our issue is, if they go in and tear the fence down because it's out of code, according to planning, which I talked to Omar in planning, they're thinking about going ahead and going in and tearing the fence down, because in some areas it's falling apart, it's falling down, and if we fix what we can, which is what we've already done, do we run the risk of losing that money that we put into it because they're gonna tear it down? So that's, we just need an idea of what we can do next, or where we can go with this, so we're not losing all the money we have, we already invested in our lots, in our neighborhood.
May I ask a question? Um, why was the street not dedicated to the city, like once it was built? It's a public street that everyone uses?
According to them, what the city says, according to tax, it's a private street, because it's owned by the development company, so they're calling it a private street.
Yeah, let's have our planning director, I think he's done some research on this, um, we can definitely follow up as well.
So the, uh, development, um, was intended to be a gated community with private, uh, streets and private, uh, community areas. Um, I'm not sure we have a subdivision plat at this point, we have a plan that was recorded, and so liability as to who's responsible for the ongoing maintenance of those, uh, improvements is unknown. Uh, the, uh, the fence, uh, is a board-on-board fence, it's in very poor condition, so it'd have to come down if, uh, if we had the responsible party. In this case, since you didn't have a subdivision plat, you don't have the creation of an HOA, and so I think they're talking about a voluntary HOA, not a stat, a plat-created HOA.
But then he sold lots to these people, right? And when he sold the lots, weren't there deed restrictions?
Yeah, we got the deed, we have deed restrictions, we have this one.
So wouldn't that be the creation, or in there, shouldn't there be the creation of the HOA?
Correct, so this looks like a plat, however, it's actually just a plan that was recorded, and so you wouldn't get the HOA docs until you had a plat recorded that attached to, uh, to the HOA docs, that never happened.
Mr. Villegas, what I'm gonna suggest is you get, you get together with our planning director and kinda try and figure it out, he'll, he'll let you know kinda what needs to be done, and you guys can figure it out that way hopefully, okay?
When was that done?
Oh, four.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have Mr. Mark Lucio, if you would please come forward.
Mayor, Commissioners. Um, Mark, my name's Mark Lucio, I'm the Vice President at West Brownsville Little League, and I'm here to speak to you and ask you, humbly ask you for the additional funding for the project that we've been working, uh, on for the past couple of years. Now, a little backstory to this project is, it was, it was myself and Rusty Brock sitting in the back of a truck and, uh, wanted to raise a little bit of funds to build some batting cages, how can, how can we leave it better, what, what legacy can we leave behind? And we sat back there and, and contemplated what fundraisers we're gonna have, and, uh, lo and behold, now I'm here in front of you all, and it's because of, uh, of our gracious, um, contributors that I am here, and that dream of leaving a legacy and leaving something better, you know, for the, for our, for our kids behind is because of, of you all and, and, and them. So, I, I humbly ask that, that, that we move forward with the, the additional funds, we've already raised quite a bit, and, and I just, I, I, speaking from the heart, uh, this, nothing gives me greater joy than this project, it's, it's, uh, it's taken on, on a shape that, uh, that I never thought it would, and with your help, we, we can, uh, we can leave that legacy together. So I humbly ask that, that we move forward on this project, entertain any questions that you may or may not have.
All right, thanks, Mark.
Next, we have Mr. Dino Chavez. Do you please come forward?
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, uh, Dino Chavez, West Brownsville Little League President. West Brownsville Little League has been part of our community continuously since 1952. During the last 67 years, we've had the privilege of working with an estimated 20,000 kids and over 6,000 unpaid volunteers. Many of these kids have gone on to play high school and college ball, and a select few even professional ball. We believe we have made a positive impact in our community. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit entity, we receive no funding at all from the city, the county, the school district, or any other public entity. 100% of our operating expenses are paid by the sponsorships, donations, fundraisers, and registration fees that we keep as low as possible so that all kids can afford to play. For those kids that cannot afford to pay, we waive their fees in part or entirely so that payment is not a barrier to playing. Additionally, Little League never charges entry fees to watch games, and we promote participation for kids of all skill levels. West Brownsville Little League Park in its current location was created by volunteers in 1962 by Rotarians and a donation of land from the St. Paul's Methodist Church. Rotarians helped run the league while the church ran the concessions. From 1962 through the mid-1990s, this partnership flourished and helped create many, many positive memories for thousands of Brownsville kids and their families. In 1998, the Methodist Church gifted the park to the city of Brownsville. However, this gift deed also included the perpetual lease agreement with Brownsville, with West, I shoo, with West Brownsville Little League. Since that time, the park has become a city asset and is also a city responsibility to maintain, like all other city parks. Currently, West Brownsville Little League runs all sports activities at the park while the city takes care of general maintenance. This partnership worked great because of the exceptional people who run the city parks department, we couldn't do it without them. However, two years ago, our league reached a point where we could no longer accept all kids who wanted to join. There was a good number that did not get to join because our park was at capacity. Additionally, we were made aware that there was a whole sector of other kids that were not being served at all, kids with special needs. At that time, we realized that we had to do something, so we set out a plan to seek donations, sponsorships, and grants that could help us develop our fields to make them more inclusive for kids of all abilities, as well as expanded capacity, to serve additional kids that we were already serving. We felt the project did not belong to the city, but rather to the community, and as good stewards, we set out to become an example of what all other leagues could accomplish without relying solely on the city for funding. So over the last two years, we've raised a total of $479,000 on our own towards the needed upgrades. The money will be spent 100% on the park, which will remain a city asset into the future, but we still need your help to get us past the finish line. A respectful request for your help and assistance so that we can continue to help kids of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, we have Ms. Patricia Silva. Do you please come up?
My name is Patricia Silva, I'm just gonna read out some ideas, something I wanted to share with everybody. I have been with West Brownsville Little League for over 10 years, I've served as a parent volunteer and as Vice President in the past. This year, my job as Vice Chair for our new Challenger Baseball League is to raise awareness for special needs children trying to get involved in sports as a way to be more active and as a part of a healthy lifestyle for them and their families. As Vice President for Softball, I want to get girls more involved in becoming leaders. Girls usually take the backseat to boys' sports as far as awards, presentation, uniforms, and even attention and/or recognitions. Promoting a fair and positive environment is top priority. I hope to not only make the public aware of how girls' sports and our special needs childrens are set aside, but as to how important they all are in forming a great community, and to make them feel part of that great community they built as well. In a city of almost a quarter of a million people, the programs, opportunities, and facilities for these two groups is very limited. This would be the only completely inclusive field for children or adults with special needs that addresses the needs of wheelchair-bound individuals, along with any special need adaptation. We will have B-B baseball for the visually impaired, along with adaptations for the hearing impaired. It is only right, and I wanted to share this, um, a lot of these comments is feedback from our parents, it is only right to begin the accessibility responsibility not only for use by children with our special needs, but for our veterans that may come back from defending our country in a mobility restriction and for the aging who may be need, who may need those adaptations as well. West Brownsville Little League is known to be dedicated to encouraging good sponsorship, or good sportsmanship rather, honesty, loyalty, courage, and respect for authority. This league opened their doors to softball years ago and has offered great support for the growth and continued development of the sport throughout the years. Now they open their doors to the Challenger Baseball League and have welcomed our special needs children to make this league their home. Thank you from our parents and from myself.
Thank you.
Next, we have a work session. Multimodal transportation realignments to fix, uh, to fix route bus service and long-range service plan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is Norma Samora, and I'm the Director for the new, um, Multimodal Transportation Department. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present this evening. Presenters along with me are Ms. Tracy Orsias, Transit Manager, and Mr. Antonio Zubietta, Mobility and Transit Planner, who recently joined our team. Our plan ambitions a multimodal transportation network that connects people and places in a safe and resilient manner by providing effective and affordable transportation choices that are supportive of a healthy community and provide access to jobs and services. Our goal is to expand connectivity by providing mobility choices, reducing travel congestion, encourage regional connectivity, and enhance public safety. But first of all, a brief history. Uh, this year, we celebrated our 40th anniversary of excellent service. In 1978, the city of Brownsville acquired Brownsville Transportation Company from Jose Colunga Jr. In 1979, the city of Brownsville created Brownsville Urban System. In 2001, the Multimodal Transit Terminal Visibility Study was initiated. In 2012, La Plaza Multimodal Transportation Hub was completed. In 2017, the Comprehensive Study was also completed, uh, which brings us to why we're here today. The Comprehensive Study was conducted by Nelson Nygaard Consulting Associates, Inc., and was funded through a Brownsville, through the Brownsville NPO. It was a 12-month study, and the last study prior to this one was in 2006. As a result of the study, the following recommendations have been completed. In January, I'm sorry, in January of 2019, Metro Connect transitioned to the Lower Rio Grande Development Council, RGV Metro Express Service. We implemented the realignment of Route 14 in partnership with TSC, and we implemented real-time tracking through the Rite System app. Today, Brownsville Metro has the largest, today, Brownsville Metro has the largest ridership of all the transit providers in the Lower Rio Grande Valley, we transport more than 1.5 million passenger trips annually, we operate 13 fixed routes with 17 buses during peak service, and eight paratransit units for ADA complimentary paratransit services. We operate four facilities, La Plaza Multimodal Terminal that operates from 4:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., 365 days a year, the four-level parking garage that operates 24 hours all year round, the Jose Colunga Maintenance Facility, and the North Side Transfer Station. Brownsville Metro Services operate Monday through Saturday from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and close, and is closed on Sundays and the four holidays on the screen. In the past five years, our operating expenses have relatively stayed constant. In fiscal year 2019, the year-to-date expenditures was 92% of the overall budget. The majority of the unspent funds is due to unfilled vacancies. This graph indicates the breakdown of Brownsville Metro's revenue sources. It is important to note that Brownsville Metro operating services have always been provided based on federal and state subsidies. On this slide, you can see that the federal and state subsidy equals to 40% of what we get for, uh, providing the services. The general fund contributes 26%, and the other revenue sources make up the difference. Unfortunately, funding has not kept up with the growth of the, uh, that we've experienced in our community. In 2010, we were successful in changing federal transportation language to allow transit agencies in communities that exceeded the urbanized area population threshold of 200,000 to retain its operating funds on fleet size. Most of the systems that, um, that exceed the 200,000 population threshold have some type of funding sources, but there has been a few that have not been able to, uh, to keep up with that. So, in an effort to ensure that we would still continue to be able to provide Metro, uh, Brownsville Metro Services, uh, we, um, and a group of, of the agencies that were affected by this got together, and, uh, we were able to be able to change the, the threshold to fleet size. So any system that has 100 buses or less is able to maintain, is able to continue to use their formula of operating funds for actual operating of service. Once, uh, before it was, once you exceeded the 200,000 population threshold, the funding was only allowed for capital and planning, so we were able to continue to use, uh, use it for operating. In 2017, we were also successful at the state level to create a, a large urban, a large urban funding category for those systems in the state that had exceeded the 200,000 population threshold. for those systems in the state that had exceeded the 200,000 population threshold, uh, to allow us to continue to receive state funds for operating. These efforts have allowed us to maintain the transit services. Again, it's important to note that most systems that have exceeded the 200,000, uh, urbanized population thresholds have a local dedicated transit revenue source. Some of the challenges that we are experiencing is retraining and recruiting transit operators and other CDL holders. Um, as you can see by this slide, we currently have 12 full-time equivalent positions, CDL position vacancies. It's, um, we've been working to try to get, um, ahead of this. But with the regulations and, and state mandates, it's getting diff, more, more and more difficult to, um, attract, um, CDL, uh, position, uh, CDL holders. Keeping up with the market wage is also a challenge. Uh, wages in comparisons to the other agencies in the area. As you can see, Brownsville Metro, uh, provides, um, the lowest wage uh, next to Valley Metro. Well, Valley Metro, um, is able to hire uh, at entry level at 1375 if they come in with experience. Some of the continued challenges, uh, our bus fleet average age is 11.5 years. Um, as 11.5 years, um, most of our buses are, with our oldest bus being, uh, 2001 and our current, our most newest bus being a 2016 now. That's gonna change when we get the five buses, uh, next year. But as the average bus age increases, so does the maintenance cost and fuel consumption, therefore also fuel costs. At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, turn over the presentation to Ms. Tracy. Uh, I will be discussing funding opportunities and future recommendations towards the end of the presentation.
Tracy?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tracy Orceas. I'm the Transit Manager for Brownsville Metro. I'll be talking a little bit more about the Comprehensive Study and the realignment of the routes. The strategic plan of the Comprehensive Study aims to serve existing riders better, attract new riders, and improve the overall productivity of transit service in Brownsville. The goals of the study were to identify strengths and weaknesses to the existing system by reviewing travel patterns, assessing system efficiencies, and identifying unmet transit needs, then to recommend service improvements, which would serve existing riders better, attract new riders, and improve the overall system productivity. To complement the study's technical analysis, the study team conducted an extensive surveying effort, which was available onboard and online. There were a total of 647 survey respondents. 593 of those were onboard and 54 online. 80% of the survey respondents rode the system multiple days per week. 79% of passengers felt very safe and 20% somewhat safe using our public transit. The highest number of trips completed were from riders who traveled between their homes and their place of employment. Results from the survey indicated that riders preferred more frequent service, Sunday service, and later service. Here's a system map that we received from the consultants, showing what the route alignments could look like. This route alignment will improve retail access and job access, create new coverage, strengthen our North Side Transfer Station, create a new crosstown east-west route alignment, simplify connections, create frequency by coordinating the routes, give more direct access to Idea and Lopez students. Um, it's important to note that over 14% of our ridership is from students. Clearly define the routes and have the possibility of an emerging, an emerging hub. This is our current system map as of today. We took the, we took our current system map and overlaid it. In black is our current system and highlighted in purple is the proposed future alignment of the routes. As you can see, the majority of the system would not be affected. On the next slides, I will be going through specific information about our current system and the proposed system route by route. Being mindful of the time, I'll be going through the information quickly and only be giving highlights about each route. Keep in mind that even though there are some routes which will look completely different, there are other routes that will be realigned to cover areas that the current routes cover. And the only the areas in black, which are not highlighted in purple, will be redirected. This is a map of our current Route 1, which circulates on the west end of Brownsville. During the study, it ranked fifth out of 13 route alignments, and over the past four years, it averaged 104,000 passenger trips per year. This, uh, slide shows the bus stop locations of that route. Here is a map of the proposed Route 1. This proposed alignment would create new service along Alton Gore Boulevard, where there is high population density. If I lived in the westbound of Brownsville, I could take this route to get to Walmart or to the 77 Flea Market. This route would be coordinated with the proposed route for creating service every half hour along Levy Street, Elizabeth Street, and Old Military Highway. This slide, slide shows the proposed Route 1's bus stop locations and circled in red is the area where new bus stops would be placed. Our current Route 2 circulates along Central Boulevard to Sunrise Commons. This route has one of our highest riderships and over the past four years, has had an average of 142,000 passenger trips per year. This slide shows Route 2's bus stop locations. Here's our current Route 13, which complements the Route 2. It ranked sixth during the survey and averaged 115,000 passenger trips per year over the past four years. This is the bus stop locations of that route. Here is the map of the proposed Route 2. This proposal will provide much-needed additional frequency to the current alignment, add an additional 40 minutes of service in the evening, and strengthen the North Side Transfer Station, giving passengers on the east side of Brownsville faster alternatives to retail and job destinations. For example, if I wanna go to the, the Central Library, the mall, Target, big, uh, big, uh-huh, Bestlot, I'm sorry, Best Buy, I could take this route to get there. These are the bus stop locations. In red is where new bus stops would be placed. This is our current Route 3. It serves Boca Chica, Paredes Lane Road, and Alton Gore Boulevard. The route itself is currently two hours long. It uses two buses. Um, it was ranked second during the Comprehensive Study out of the 13 routes and averages 179,000 passenger trips over the past four years. This shows the bus stops. The proposed Route 3 would speed up service, making it an hour and a half instead of two hours. It would continue to serve the majority of areas it currently serves and people will still be able to get to important destinations like the DMV and Valley Regional Hospital. These would be the bus stop locations. Route 5 currently serves what, the west end of Brownsville, Ruben Torres, McAllen Road, and Frenich. This route ranked ninth during the study and has an average of 98,000 passenger trips each year over the past four years. Previous proposed routes would cover the majority of the area we are currently looking at on this Route 5. These are the bus stop locations. We would change the current Route 5 to the proposed Route 4. This route would create, create an east-west crosstown service, bringing much-needed service to Los Ebonos Boulevard, as well as bringing more strength to our North Side Transfer Station. This slide shows the proposed Route 4's bus stop locations and circle it in red, all the areas that we'll be putting new bus stops. Route 6, along with Route 8, served the southmost area. Route 6 is also one of our highest ridership routes and was ranked third during the Comprehensive Study. As we see the proposed Route 6, keep in mind that there will be two routes covering the southmost area. This is the bus stop locations. Here is the map of the proposed Route 6. This route would primarily operate along International and Southmost Boulevard. During the week, there would be service every half hour and Saturdays would have hourly service. This route proposal would create an extra hour of service each day compared to the current route. The route would operate along the same directional path, making it easy for riders to know how to get back from where they came from. This would be the bus stop locations. Here is the current Route 8, which is very similar to the Route 6, operating in the southmost area. Route 8 scored 10th place during the study and has an average of 83,000 passenger trips between the years 2016 to 2019 each year. These are the bus stop locations. This is the proposed Route 8's map. This alignment would continue to serve the southmost area along the back end of southmost. It would also provide direct service to UTRGV and TSC students. This is the bus stop locations and where new bus stops would be placed. So since we went from six to eight, we'll return to Route 7. Um, this route, it passes directly in front of our maintenance yard on Billy Mitchell, over by the airport. It provides service along International Boulevard and Boca Chica Boulevard. These are the bus stop locations of that route. The proposed Route 7 would have very slight changes from the current Route 7. However, it will, once the east side transfer station and airport are completed, serve those areas. These are the bus stop locations. Route 9 ranked first during the Comprehensive Study with an average of 610 passenger trips on weekdays and 263 passenger trips on Saturdays. This route averaged 160,000 passenger trips per year over the past four years. It serves PUB, Osnam Center, Rivera High School, and a few other locations. These are the bus stop locations. The proposed Route 9 would keep the same route alignment. The proposal would create one-directional service instead of the current bidirectional service along Minnesota, Boca Chica 511, and Ruben Torres Boulevard, to avoid the passenger confusion. The proposed route would also have hourly departures instead of sporadic departure, current, sporadic departures times that the current route has. This is the current Route 11. It serves OPI and Ruben Torres. This route passes two Walmarts, HEBs, and the Housing Authority. This is the bus stops. This route would also keep its current route alignment. However, it would have an increase of service during peak hours, which are 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. and from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. This is our current Route 20. This route serves on average 99,000 passenger trips per year. Many of the previous shown slides would cover this route proposal, the majority of this route. This is the bus stop locations. This is the proposed Route 20, which would connect numerous apartment complexes along Rockwell and Lindell Drive directly to retail destinations, as well as provide outbound and inbound service to Dean Porter Park and Gladys Porter Zoo. These are the bus stop locations of that. I wanted again to show this overlaid map. Um, currently, our implementation schedule would be for the summer of 2020. I wanna personally thank each one of you as, for your support as we proceed with this. Um, I'm gonna turn the time over to Mr. Antonio Zubietta.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Antonio Zubietta. I'm the, uh, Transit and Mobility Planner under the New Multimodal Transportation Department. I'll be continuing with this presentation and I'll be talking to you about the connectivity of our bicycle and pedestrian network to public transit services. The city of Brownsville is very unique when it comes to, uh, transportation. Traveling in within our community can be achieved by a wide variety of modes of transportation. It could be achieved by walking, cycling, driving our personal vehicles, using public, public transit, or even taking a flight. Rail and our seaport are other forms of transportation found in our city.
And we may add space in some future form.
Um, however, as we prepare to undertake and implement Brownsville Metro's route realignment, it is important that connectivity between our bicycle pedestrian network and public transit is assessed and strategically planned. The goal is to ensure a seamless connectivity between the different modes of transportation used in our community. For example, at times, the final destination of our public transit users goes well beyond the bus stops in which they are dropped off at. Thus, it is important that bus stops are strategically selected to provide safe options to transit users, pedestrians, cyclists, as they reach that final destination. Whether you're traveling from the Upper Valley or locally by either driving, use of transit, cycling, or walking, the goal is to provide seamless mobility options to reach that final destination. There are many benefits to establishing connectivity between the bicycle and pedestrian network to public transit services. Having a well-planned multimodal network with safe and efficient access to bike and pedestrian network will create and offer a seamless transportation connectivity. This means ease of access to walking, biking, public transit amenities, but also the simplicity to alternate between each. A well-planned multimodal network will promote our community to be less dependent on driving. As a result, our community will engage and practice healthier lifestyles and vehicular congestion will be reduced. Also, it will help to transform our city into a more walkable cycling community, thus attracting tourism. In order for us to properly assess connectivity of public transit services to bike and pedestrian amenities, the Multimodal Transportation Department has gathered the following data. This data includes data on existing hike and bike network, proposed bike and pedestrian routes, proposed Brownsville Metro's route realignment, and the existing bus stop inventory. The city of Brownsville's current hike and bike trail network is composed of approximately 100 linear miles of bicycle pedestrian facilities. Some of the trails in this network are the Historic Battlefield Trail, Basile de la Resaca Trail, and Belt and Trail, to name a few. The future hike and bike routes include recommendations from the Connecting Brownsville, the 2013 Bicycle Trail Master Plan, and the Karakara Trails, previously referred to as the Lower Rio Grande Valley Active Transportation and Tourism Plan. The city of Brownsville's bike and pedestrian network includes the following: sidewalks, side paths, multi-use trails, shared use paths, and on-street bicycle and pedestrian facilities. It is important to note that in the near future, a bicycle and pedestrian coordinator will be hired to undertake bicycle and pedestrian planning tasks under the Multimodal Transportation Department. Their knowledge and experience will be helpful in better analyzing and planning our multimodal transportation network. Public transit data includes the proposed realignment of fixed routes and the Brownsville Metro's inventory of bus stops. As you can see, by overlaying these data sources, we're able to better analyze and strategically determine the possible locations or key areas to place bus stops. Our goal is to place new required bus stops at convenient and safe locations to complement bike and pedestrian facilities. This methodology can help determine if relocation of some of the existing bus stops is required to effectively and efficiently align with current and future hike and bike routes. This is a process that we will be utilizing to assess the connectivity of Brownsville Metro's route realignment to bike and pedestrian amenities in an effort to provide and establish safe and seamless multimodal transportation system. Now I will turn it over to Ms. Amora.
Thank you, Antonio.
This picture, this picture represents a multimodal transportation network that brings new innovative technologies, supporters of healthy communities, and connecting people and places in a safe manner with affordable transportation. At this time, I'm gonna be discussing a little bit, um, some, uh, funding, uh, option opportunities. Uh, we, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, that most of the transit systems that exceeded the 200,000 population threshold have some mechanism of, uh, funding their system with some type of dedicated local, uh, revenue, usually a percentage of the sales tax. This is something that could be undertaken, but it will be very difficult to do and will require legislation authorization. The city of McAllen utilizes 4B Economic Development Corporation money for contributions for transit. The type, therefore, the type B sales tax may be used for any projects eligible under type A rules and serve, and several other... and serve and several other project types, including quality-of-life improvements. The Type B corporation may pay for land, building, equipment, facilities, targeting infrastructure improvements for maintenance and operating costs associated with related transportation projects. This could be an easier implementation. We could also implement the fare restructure recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan. We are proactively seeking retail recruitment of tenant leases on vacant spaces at the La Plaza Terminal and Parking Garage, working with the Retail and Development Manager. It's an opportunity to increase parking garage monthly fees. Advertising opportunities with the new buses that we will be getting with multimedia displays that are going to be inside the buses, as well as the La Plaza Terminal screen displays we have within and potential bus stop digital signage. Also, in the future, relocating budget savings back to transit, to the transit funds. We anticipate fuel efficiency savings with the delivery of the new buses at approximately fifty-six thousand annual, at approximately fifty-six thousand annually. Again, that's just basis for the first few years, you know, you realize that savings. And as the ages, as the buses age, like I explained previously, fuel consumption does go up as well as maintenance costs. These funding options could be opportunities to generate, these funding options could be an opportunity to generate the necessary funds to work towards implementing the Comprehensive Plan long-term recommendations. As Tracy discussed during her presentation, to increase services on all routes, to restructure the fares to encourage day pass purchases, and to improve passenger amenities through the construction of a transfer station at the Alton Broer Walmart. Of course, all of this will take funds to be able to do. For example, just adding Sunday service, eight hours a day, would, is an estimated cost of about four-hundred thousand annually. And once again, our goal is to build a world-class, a world-class multimodal transportation system. At this time, if you have any questions, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening.
Yeah, I have a couple. Looking at the survey, obviously, the top three things were more frequent bus service. I think you've started to address that with the route alignment. And I know that there's a couple of routes where you're doing every thirty minutes. On Sunday service, you just mentioned that, and then later bus service. On later bus service, I noticed that there were some inconsistencies as to when the routes ended. Some ended at 6:25, some ended later at eight something. Is that the last pickup, or is that when the bus is back at the station? How does that work?
The last pickup is usually, it's around 7:30 right now. And I think we will make, we will now make them all pretty much even around 7:30.
Well, that's what I was wondering, because just about every single route had a different time that it ended. So I'm kind of curious why you don't have consistent times to where it ends at the same, at the same time on every route. How do you, how are people supposed to know what time the route ends?
Well, in, at our terminal, we, we actually have all the times posted as to when the term, when they, when they actually depart from the terminal and where, and when the last departure is. Basically, what we're trying to do is trying to get back, get everybody back home. So some routes, and based on the timing of the route, you know, they, they have to interline or connect with another route. So that will allow them to get to the final destination. I mean, Tracy, I don't know if you can explain a little bit better?
For example, one route takes a half hour, let's say, but another route takes an hour and a half. So we're trying to line those up so that they do kind of end at the same time. However, in the end, it all does come down to cost. I don't know if you saw in one of the slides, just for an extra hour of service, the cost associated to that. The plan does call for extending some of the routes, however, there is cost association. Right now, the realignment that we're going to take into action over the next year, it's a cost neutral. There's no additional cost to it. However, we will be able to extend some routes a little later, but that's because we'll start some of them a little later where there was less ridership.
Okay. The reason I was asking the question about the time is because they're all different. And then also, I'm concerned about Route Six, for example, that's out in the Southmost area. That one ends at 6:25. And I know a lot of those people do not have vehicles to get to and from work. So that, I think, is a candidate for extended hours, because I've heard from so many people, I'm sure Commissioner Golowski has as well, in that district, that they miss buses and they're not able to get home sometimes because of that time. So have you looked at that?
We totally agree.
And this is, this is meant to, taking your comments, so that we can go back and take all these comments and come back and maybe with a proposal or different proposals.
Okay, yeah, I would suggest that, because, I mean, I understand that there's costs involved, but I haven't heard a single thing about what kind of return you would get. I know it's going to be more expensive to run a certain route, but I'm also wondering what kind of return you expect to get on that route. And I know that some of this public transportation is a service, and so you're not always going to make money on it. I understand that, and I think we're willing to, to pay for different services, as long as, as we understand what those costs are going to be. I also don't, I mean, there's also ways to, to increase revenue, such as the tenant leases, other revenues, advertising. I'm not sure how much you pursued that. And then also, just last, the Sunday service, it looks like you said the cost is going to be about four-hundred, four thousand? Is that per year?
Per year, fifty-two Sundays.
Okay. I'd like to look into that as well, because I think that's much needed. I think the return that we'd get from people going shopping on Sundays or doing other things on Sundays would offset that. Not entirely, obviously, but it would offset it a bit.
And we can definitely look at all of the recommendations and go back and reevaluate some of the end times and the Sunday service and come back with the return.
And the reason I'm mentioning is, I'm not pulling it out of thin air, but these are the top three things that people came back with on your surveys.
Yes, and we know, I mean, it's, I mean, we've known that for quite some time. It's just been, how do we make it happen?
Anybody else?
Actually, can you, can I get an email version of your PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
The one thing I wasn't clear on, you said that if we cross the two-hundred-thousand-person population threshold, then it affect, how does it affect us? Because now with the census thing, how, what implications do it have?
Right.
Is that population or ridership?
It's a popular, it's the urbanized area population. The urbanized areas of, not the City of Brownsville population, but the urbanized area zone population threshold.
Are we there?
So we're far.
Yes, we already exceeded, we exceeded it in 2010. Our population has grown dramatically from 1990 to 2010, and we're going to see another spike in 2020.
I think what Ms. Amora was speaking to with the two-hundred-thousand population was that before, they used a different metric to identify whether we received funding. And since they changed from, from, yeah, now, yeah, we, we changed the language to not be, in order for us to continue to use our operating funds, we're not, we're not going to be, the formula is not going to be based on the population threshold, but on the bus size of the agencies. So any agency that has a hundred buses or less can still continue to utilize their federal operating funds. In the past, once you exceeded the two-hundred-thousand population threshold, though you would not be able to utilize those dollars for operating, you could only use them for capital and planning, which kind of defeated the purpose for us, because, I mean, what's the purpose of capital and planning? We don't have the funds to operate the service. So we went back and with several other agencies and were able to be successful in changing it to, to allow us to use, to continue to use those funds until, once we exceed the a hundred-bus population threshold, we will, you know, the funds will no longer be available to be used for operating. And for right now, any system between a hundred, one and seventy-five buses can continue to use fifty percent of the federal formula allocation for operating. And once you exceed the seven, the seventy-five threshold, from seventy-six to a hundred, you will only be able to use twenty-five percent of the formula funds for operating assistance. Well, my understanding, we're far from the seventy-five buses, so we're, we're okay.
Yeah.
The, the parking garage, I know that the commercial space is empty, but do you, would you all get the benefit of those?
Yes, all the revenue that is generated from facilities that were built with federal dollars get back put in into the transit fund, which helps us fund the services that we currently have.
What, I, I hear different things about the parking garage itself, that it's fully leased, and I'm not sure if that's even true. Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
We have, we have approximately two-hundred-and-forty contracts. That, that's people that are, you know, come in and pay on a monthly basis and say, you know, I want to park in your facility, and they pay that. That does not include the daily users or the weekly users that, that use the service. But we're open twenty-four hours a day. And so, I mean, at any given time, you still have parking spaces, especially on the fourth floor and the third, and the third-floor ramp. But we're still able to accommodate everybody that's coming in for, to request the utilization of the, of the parking garage.
So the two-hundred-and-forty contracts, do they require that those spaces be, that those spaces be available at all times, twenty-four hours?
And, I mean, they, they can use them whenever they want.
Okay, but they're not guaranteed a spot, if they have a contract?
No, there's no, no, nothing is identified as a guarantee. They just have access in and out.
And regarding the tenant spaces, we are looking at a possible RFP for brokerage, commercial brokerage services. So we start filling those tenant spaces and generating income.
How many spaces do we have?
There's eight suites in the parking garage, and there's five suites that are left in the multimodal terminal.
But any money that you generate from that, can it really be used for, say, bus? No, you have to keep it separate, right, because you want to invest in the building and upkeep of the structure.
Well, it would go back into the public transit fund, and it would be utilized for O and M services. And, you know, if, if it was available, we would also be able to maybe utilize some of it for expanding service. But again, it just depends on how much, because right now, our operating service is subsidized by the, by ten percent of the, ten percent of the, of the revenues that we generate for public transit are, are the leases and the rents.
But we could look at different options in terms of how do that, what that can generate in revenue and if that can offset some of expanded service. That's a policy, policy decision on how to do that.
Yeah, because those, the commercial spaces at the parking garage have been empty from the very beginning.
Yeah, right. We'll work on that.
Yeah, it's been, it's been difficult. And another question is, on top of them paying their lease fee, there is a common area maintenance fee that they pay. So that, that helps pay off the maintenance expenses.
I have a question on bus shelters. Do we have a plan on the annual basis to improve or add on to the inventory that we have in bus shelters? And, and I know you're increasing or expanding the proposed routes. And what does that imply, you know, what are the implications on that?
Well, on the new areas that we're going to be adding, we're probably going, we're going to be relocating some of the bus stops that were in areas that we're going to be moving away from. But yes, I mean, it is an area where, I mean, we do generate approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year in advertising revenue, and I think that there's still opportunity there to generate more revenue. So it's something that we are looking at and exploring and see what, what are, what options are out there for us.
Do you have a way to identify the volumes of the different bus stops? Which ones have the highest volume?
Yeah, yes, I mean, it's true.
They have the numbers, the annual numbers.
It's based on boarding.
By bus stop, to, to know where you should put like a covered bus stop that's used a lot more than others.
Yeah, and, and we do, it's basically based on boardings, where do people board the most?
Yeah.
Norma, would the app allow that or anything, or that nature, capture that data?
Not at the moment, but it's something that we could upgrade to.
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Maybe with the app, we can upgrade if that's a feature, or at least review that possibility, because the data will help our decision-making in the future.
And the new fare boxes that we're going to be adding, that will also help in being able to track the people coming in and where they're coming from.
The, the coin boxes, do you also use those?
You were going to get quite a bit, quite a few new shelters with the Tiger Funds. Have you already installed those, or are those still coming?
No, those are still coming. We're still in the process of planning that.
What's the timeframe for this?
Well, we're currently in the A and E process of getting the architect in place. I think the group met, well, you were all at the meeting that we had on the bus shelters. I was getting late.
Yeah, it'll be within the next year when we're going to be starting on it. I don't have the exact dates at the moment.
You've identified the shelter, you've identified the stops, right?
Yes, the stops have been identified, and we've already have the environmental clearance on them. We are also, on some of them, we, we were able to obtain some of the surveying already done. Some of these funds, some of these bus stops are also being paid with CDBG dollars. And so their environmental clearance has also been, that has already been cleared as well. And so we, I know staff met this week to put the plan together as to, you know, when to bring in the, the A and E, the, the architect and the surveyors. And, and then we have to select a design of the shelter. So that's one of the things that we're looking at right now, is possible options for, for shelters.
Do the current contracts with the city prohibit any other companies from coming in to add bus stops or to advertise or to provide additional bus stops for, in exchange for advertising? We have two contracts right now, right? One for the buses and one for the bus stops?
Yes, yes.
Could you provide me copies of those two contracts?
Sure. We'll be more, we'll be glad. I know we're, we're speaking to individual right now on, on options or, or possibilities, potentially a pilot project, to see what can be done.
Yeah, I was approached about that. They were willing to build the bus stops if they could just do the advertising, if it's the same one.
We're also looking at certain unique areas, nodes, like transportation nodes, such as the airport, where we're trying to include service, that maybe they have a different design to kind of match kind of that whole corridor that we're creating with, with the airport and the, and the terminal and that area. So, so we're also looking at, should a design in certain areas be different? Such as downtown, or airport, or what have you, that would be part of the design process.
Well, just thinking about it now, if we have the funding for some of these, we should probably move forward with those and then cover the gaps maybe through a third party. Anybody else?
You know, it never hurts to have more. So what we need to know is if anyone else can come in and provide those services, and if they can, they should be allowed to provide more bus stops. I mean, that's one of the very common complaints, is people sitting in either in the sun, or the cold, or the wet. And if somebody's willing to come in and provide them, you know, if that gets a cost or anything, sounds like it would be good.
Yeah, we'll provide you a copy of the contracts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Norma.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Work Session B, the Midi Cultural District Signage and Wayfinding Master Plan.
Thank you for allowing me to be here with you all tonight. I am just going to provide some updates on where we are in the Midi Cultural District. So, one of the most important things for the district currently is to develop a sense of place. Many people within our city are not aware of the cultural district, let alone people from out of the city. So we're trying to create a sense of, an identity for where we are and where we live and what it's comprised of and who it represents. Earlier this year, we were fortunate enough to gather the support of Brownsville Beautification Committee and the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau. They provided us some funding that's going to help to contribute to the enhancement of our, our branding and distinguish the district. Our first initiative was to work with a professional company to come in and help tell us how we should position ourselves and what kind of signage we should provide in the district. They surveyed our area. There's a group from Houston that came down called DG Studios, and that's sort of their bread and butter. They do sign, wayfinding signages for districts. They came down, they surveyed our area, and they provided us this new signage, wayfinding master plan that's sort of a sub of our overall master plan for the district. So right here, let's see if I can get to the right pages. So, the first thing they did is they sort of just gave us our own sketches of outlines for the district. That's, uh, right there, you can see from the sixty-nine highway down to Sixth and Seventh Street. It sort of wraps around Dean Porter Park all the way down to the cemetery and Washington Park. Uh, and they identified all of the different amenities in the cultural district. And then, here, they've sort of identified all of the different wayfinding signage that we currently have in the district. How people are currently finding us. And then, um, they identified the way that the traffic circulates into the district. Whether they're coming off the highway, Palm Boulevard, or coming, uh, north from the bridges. And the different key interact, intersections within the district. And then they made the recommendation. So this is some of the larger wayfinding signage that they have proposed to be part of the district. That includes sort of directional on where to find different locations. And some of the smaller directional signs, whether it's on the way through Linear Park or the street level identity, um, which they also proposed. And so this is kind of the most important, uh, part of this proposal for us because we wanted to know which direction to take with this project. And one of the things that is sort of the low hanging fruit was the street signs for us. So that's what we moved on first. Um, and within the next few weeks, we'll have some production of new street signs for the district. That's gonna go, it's gonna include about sixty-one street signs that have the Midi branding on it, the color scheme and all of that. And we've been working with, uh, Noel, uh, with Armando Gutierrez, with Carlos Lastra, and of course with Tamara McClone to get this whole project going. And so I really appreciate all the effort that they've put in to make this happen. I wanted to thank you all for allowing me to give you this information and provide an update on where we are in the Midi Cultural District. And we hope to continue to improve our wayfinding signage in the district.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So are you gonna put the big ones, of the ones like this?
Yes, eventually we'll get there.
Okay, but the first phase is just the little ones with the screening?
Right. Right now, we have about fifty thousand dollars to work with. So, um, we're working on the street level signs. And then once those are complete, then we'll move to the next phase and start working on additional ones.
And can the city do those, right? Because they do street signs or road, road signs or, or is it gonna be done by someone else?
The city's gonna install them according to the presentation, right?
But the actual signs?
Well, I would say that depends. I don't know what the maintenance, what we've discussed with engineering, but this type of sign is a lot easier to maintain than this type of sign. So I don't, I wouldn't have to see that's being still at that level.
I guess I'm not understanding the question.
Because doesn't the city also do the sign like where it says the name or, uh, uh?
Oh, yes, so the city does do that, um, for the city. But since this one was a Midi project, uh, the city Public Works Department has approved the grade of metal that we're using and the deci- is the developer that's using, that we're using. And then they're gonna help us with the installation, but we've paid for the actual signs themselves.
To, to a third party?
Yeah, just to, to change them out.
And on the larger signs, will you be leaving room for the Cannery Market that's gonna be coming onboard the next year?
For what?
The Cannery Market?
The Cannery Market, yes. That was something that was suggested to leave room for. But we, I do have to say that even though we will have, uh, some signs that have space for it, not every single organization will be listed on every single sign, um, especially the bigger ones. They will be, one of the things that they, they suggested to, they told us directly at our meeting was, don't expect everybody to be on everything, because then it would be just long lists of organizations. So we just, you know, prepare ourselves for that. That doesn't mean that, that you won't be listed in one place, but maybe not another, that kind of situation, depending on where the signs are placed.
Has BCIC been involved with your branding or with your consultant on, on the site?
One more time.
Did BCIC involve, get involved with branding?
Yes. So BCIC, um, this sort of spun off one of the initiatives from BCIC. BCIC provided funding for, uh, digital campaigns with the Midi. And in doing so, the Midi developed a branding. And so from that came, came this project.
I may, I might have missed this, but, um, how many map kiosks are you gonna have?
We haven't mapped out the exact numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, we're in phase one, working on the street level.
The reason I ask is that would kind of help with other areas, like if you're not putting the names on the signs, that would actually help people figure out where the other things are.
Yeah, and those will probably be a little bit more comprehensive, the ones that are right in front of people's faces where you can do everybody in every single part of the district.
Fairly good. On those kiosks, did y'all look at digital kiosks? Did y'all look at digital, digital kiosks?
Yeah, we haven't looked at that yet.
There, there might be potential for that as part of the broader wayfinding, even in downtown. That's kind of the way that the kiosks are going. And then you can also advertise and have, have a lot more programming on those kiosks. But maybe eventually that could be transitioned into also.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have consent agenda items.
Do you have any motions?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes?
Next, we have public hearing number one, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero fifty-four dash C O to rezone from dwelling F, general retail G, to dwelling G for all of phase one of Palo Alto Residence Subdivision located near the corner of Old Dallas Road and FM five eleven with conditional overlay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners. So, uh, this, uh, property owner is looking to actually, um, set an even zoning on their property. This property consists of eighteen point twenty-one acres. They're looking to rezone from dwelling F, general retail G, to dwelling G. And the proposed use is residential development. It is located near Old Dallas Road and FM five eleven. Here's an aerial of the property. As you can see, there is predominantly dwelling zoning, there's also general retail and medium commercial. This is a two hundred foot radius map. There were seven mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan, and P and Z does support this rezoning. There is a conditional overlay proposed by the developer. They are proposing to prohibit duplexes and to prohibit apartments, anything three units or more as per ordinance definition.
And that's at the request of the developer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is a public hearing, is anybody here on this item? Okay, do you have any motions?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, do you have any motions on the item?
This is CDCB, is CDCB's project, right?
No, this is a private property.
Oh.
Yes.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve and a second? Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion passes?
Next, we have public hearing number two, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero fifty-five to rezone from dwelling A to general retail G for a zero point four twenty-five acre tract out of one acre tract in block four, El Jardín subdivision, share nineteen Espíritu Santo Grant located at nine ten South Central Avenue.
So for this particular property, it consists zero point four two five acres. Uh, the applicant is looking to upzone to general retail G. The proposed use is for a party place. It is fronting South Central Avenue. This is an aerial of the property. The area, uh, predominantly has, uh, zoning that's, uh, dwelling. There is also apartment, general retail and, uh, light industrial within the area. This is a two hundred foot radius map. There were sixteen mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and P and Z does support this rezoning.
So this all started when someone complained because they were having the parties, right? And so then the owner decided to comply and seek the proper.
That is correct.
Planning. Did any of the, do you know if any of the people who had originally complained have, have been notified? Or like now that they're going through this process, is it okay?
They were, we notified whoever's within the two hundred foot radius. There was no opposition neither through phone calls nor through P and Z, uh, meeting. So, as of right now, there hasn't been no opposition.
And I'm just curious, because since it started out with someone, um, doing what was not zoned, what happens? Are, are they assessed a penalty or, or no, as long as they fix it, that's okay?
Well, as long as they comply and, and whatever the prosecutor tells them once they were cited, eh, then if they solve the problem, they're okay.
Do you know what happened on this case? I was gonna ask the same thing, actually.
Well, they, as soon as they got the citation, they, the next day, they went and they submitted all of their, the documents and, and plans to the building permitting division and, and to us to, to be in compliance.
Oh, so it was their idea to rezone?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Uh, how many, uh, notices that you sent out on this one?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yes.
Okay, this is a public hearing, do we have anybody here on this item? Do you have any motions?
I'll move to approve.
We need to close public hearing first.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I'll move to close the public hearing.
Motion to close and a second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
And I'll move to approve, uh, the rezoning.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes? Counsel, just in, going forward in the future, is it possible to have a motion to close a public hearing and approve at the same time?
As long as we notice that, that's what it's, the intention of the vote, yes.
Okay, I'm just curious, so we can kind of maybe cut it down a little bit going forward?
I believe so.
Okay.
Next, we have public hearing number three, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero fifty-seven to rezone from dwelling A, light industrial J, to general retail A for eleven point seven seven three acres out of three hundred and sixty-three acre tract, said land being in tracks twenty-one and twenty-four subdivision B of the Parades Partition Share Nineteen Espíritu Santo Grant located at fourteen twenty-five Robin Hood Drive.
So the applicant, which is, uh, BPUB, they're looking to rezone eleven point seven seven three acres. They currently have, uh, dwelling A zoning with light industrial J. And they're looking to, uh, make or put a constant zoning on the property, which is general retail A. The proposed use is BPUB offices and the property is fronting Robin Hood Drive. This is their aerial view of the property. This is the zoning map. There's dwelling, there's light industrial, general retail and light retail. This is the two hundred foot radius map. There were sixty-four mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan. P and Z does support this rezoning.
Do we know what the PB, future plans are for this property?
Well, the reason why the rezoning is because of the annex building that.
That's what I thought. This is where the annex building is gonna go?
Yes, office.
Okay, so they didn't check before? Because I was at the groundbreaking like a month ago. Okay, all right. Do we have, uh, anybody here on this item?
I'll move to close the public hearing, second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
I'll move to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion passes?
Public hearing number four, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero fifty-eight to rezone from light commercial D to dwelling F for an approximate thirty point seven acre tract comprised, comprised of two tracks, track one being thirteen point four forty-nine acres out of a fourteen point ninety-seven acre tract out of the unsubdivided portion of share twenty-eight Espíritu Santo Grant and track number two being seventeen point three fifty-four acres out of a twenty point nine seventy-eight acre tract out of the unsubdivided portion of share twenty-eight Espíritu Santo Grant located near the corner of East Rubent Torres Boulevard and Culture Road.
So this property consists of thirty point seven acres. They are looking to downzone from light commercial G to dwelling F. The proposed use is residential development. It's gonna be single family homes. The property is fronting East Rubent Torres Boulevard. This is the aerial of the property. So right now, the zoning is light commercial surrounding it. There's dwelling, there's general retail, medium industrial and medium commercial. This is a two hundred foot radius map. There were twenty, there, there were eighteen mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and P and Z does support this rezoning.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is anybody here on this item? Any motions?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any motions on the item?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes?
Next, we have public hearing number five, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero fifty-nine to rezone from dwelling A to dwelling G for lot seven, block one, Applewood subdivision located at one thirty-three Gilson Road.
So the applicant is looking to just change the area district of this property. They're going from dwelling G to dwelling A. The property consists of zero point one eight, one nine eight acres. And, uh, the proposed use is for a covered patio in the rear portion of the property. And this property is fronting Gilson Road. Here's the aerial. The zoning that predominates is dwelling. There is also light commercial within the vicinity, within the vicinity and also apartment. This is the two hundred foot radius map. There were nineteen mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan. P and Z does support this rezoning.
Is that Benavides, or Benavides that backs up?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, is there any special requirements because there's a school back there? I'm just wondering.
No.
Okay. Does the school also get noticed?
If it was within the two hundred foot radius map, which I believe it was, yes.
It's like ten feet. Okay, all right. This is a public hearing, is anybody here on this item? Okay, do you have a motion to close?
Motion to close, second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes?
Next, we have public hearing number six, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero sixty dash test to allow a used car lot, light commercial use in general retail G for an approximate zero point seventy-nine acre portion of a six point seventeen acre tract of land comprised of two point nine five seven acres out of blocks one seventy-five and one seventy-six, two point three twenty-nine acres out of blocks one seventy-eight and one seventy-nine and zero point eight eight nine acres out of block one eighty-one, Olmito Original Townsite located at seven thousand Expressway seventy-seven North Frontage Road.
So the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a used car lot within general retail G. The current zoning, I've mentioned, is general retail G and the property is zero point, or the portion that they're gonna be using is zero point seven nine acre. The proposed use, I've mentioned, it's a used car lot specifically for exotic vehicles. And the property is fronting North Expressway seventy-seven. Here's the aerial of the property. The zoning surrounding the property is dwelling. There's also general retail, medium commercial. This is the two hundred foot radius map. There were, there were nine, nine mailouts and zero written opposition. This is the proposed site plan. We would like to point out that it is an existing structure, uh, where City Cart used to be located at. And the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan. P and Z does support this specific use permit to allow used car lot in general retail G with the condition that the property must comply with all city codes and. with the condition that the property must comply with all city codes and regulations as determined through the site plan review process.
Anybody here on this item? Have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close in a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, okay. So do we have any motions on the item?
Move to approve.
Motion, motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have items for individual consideration. Action item number seven, consideration action on resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero ninety-four renaming the Brownsville Performing Arts Academy in the name of George A. Ramito's Performing Arts Academy.
Um, pretty simple, straightforward, uh, ordinance, it's in, uh, ordinance, sorry, resolution, it's in front of you. Uh, there were a little two, so the final version is with the mayor. Uh, there were a couple of tweaks that Ben found, uh, sorry, Commissioner Neese found, and so we just tweaked those, just missed a couple of words.
What were the tweaks? I know one of them had to do with the Brownsville Latin Jazz Festival.
Yeah, it said Brownsville Latin Jazz Festival, and then the sentence below it said Brownsville Jazz Festival.
Okay.
And then we, we added Latin Jazz Festival.
Okay.
And then the other tweak was, uh, the copy before said, uh, city secretary, and we changed it to interim city secretary.
Okay.
Uh, and then there was a spacing, some, a couple of spaces.
Formating, okay.
Formating, yeah. And so I asked for your approval tonight. Any questions, I'm here.
I'll move to approve this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Ramito.
Action item number eight, consideration action to approve the Greater Brownsville Incentive Corporation bylaws.
I'll move to table it since we didn't get the rules until the last minute.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to table. Any discussion on that? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. So it will be tabled.
Action item number nine, consideration action to award contract to Genfair for the purpose of Fairbox Fast Fair equipment for the city of Brownsville, Brownsville Metro fixed route fleet in the amount of three hundred and five thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Alright, uh, back on number eight, would y'all provide us with a copy of the current my laws? And then we just got a copy of the, of the proposed one, but I'd like to get a copy of the current.
Is that fine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Commissioners. Our multimodal transportation department fixed route service, B Metro, is requiring necessary upgrades to replace the, the current Fairbox collection system, which is now obsolete. Uh, our current vault fare collection receivers and other data collection equipment is still in good condition. We also have upgraded four units to Fast Fair technology through Genfair, and the five new hybrids will also include five, uh, Fast Fair, uh, fare boxes as well. So there will be several savings of, of money because we already have upgraded certain equipment within the, the same system. The multiple modal department, uh, transportation department has determined that an award of a contract through competitive bidding process is in, infeasible due to current investments in place, the urgency of component replacement, and for the safety and security reasons as mentioned in your agenda packet. The, the new Fast Fair technology benefits are, it's, it simplifies maintenance, uh, it has barcode reader capabilities for cell phones and other barcode ticketing. Uh, it operate, the operation for drivers and the riders is, is similar as the current system, so it's an easy transition to learning this, the new, the new technology. Accepts, uh, it accepts existing fare media and passes. It allows passengers, uh, to pay with higher denomination of dollars, let's say they can pay with a five dollar bill or ten dollar bill, ten dollar, or twenty, and they can receive a, a change card that would allow them to use the, the rides, that, that same card for future rides if they, if they would like. So staff is recommending, it also has a mobile ticketing capability where people can buy online if, if we choose to, to go on that route. It would have that ability already. Staff recommends authorizing the city manager to execute the contract, uh, which end for in the amount of three hundred and five thousand eight, eight hundred and seven dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Was this something that was budgeted already?
Yes.
Okay.
So through a grant, through two grants.
Okay, so it's getting paid for through a grant? Okay. Um, how many, I, I read it, but I know that once the hybrid systems come in, which is five, you're gonna put it on those, but you're also gonna kind of retrofit the ones that exist, that are existing, right?
Yeah, the new buses will already have the new, the new system.
Okay.
So we will have, by that time, we'll have nine in place. We're hoping to, to have the, the new buses in service by sometime in February, if possible. So we just need to replace the other.
Right, and this cost covers, covers all the bus fleet that's existing now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Do these have the ability to track how many, the volume that we're just talking about a minute ago?
Yes, it does have that capability. Currently, they have about, uh, where they tie into about two dozen different companies of A V L, which is vehicle location companies. And I'm asking the same question, you know, right now, if we have that capability either through ride system or another possibility would be to, to add a passenger counting equipment to our current ride system program, but that would be another funding option that we would need to look for. But yes, I'm gonna look into that question right away.
Are people able to pay with cash? If, if somebody comes with a five, wanting to get on the bus?
They can pay cash. Uh, the new boxes don't accept foreign coins. It'll, it'll spit those out to them and then receive them back. It, they, they can pay with cash, or they can pay with tickets, or they can buy tickets and, and barcode will scan, and they can scan those on the machine.
If I understood you, then if they, if they come with cash, then it, it returns a card?
A card.
It doesn't return cash?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
Action item number ten, consideration action to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Brownsville and West Brownsville Little League, a nonprofit corporation for the West Brownsville Little League Park renovation project.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. Um, we've heard public comment from our West Brownsville, um, team and partners, and uh, this original project was approved by City Commission, May first, twenty eighteen. Um, and from that, West Brownsville was able to, to leverage these funds to secure a grant with B C I C. Uh, the initial funding submitted to B C I C had the materials and the original groundwork that we were, um, prepared for, we were gonna do in-house, uh, but based on what the vendors were recommending for their product, there was a cost overrun on the turf and the special needs. And upon discussions with city management, uh, it was in the city's best interest to leave that to, to the experts to do that versus us taking that on and potentially increasing the liability for the city and voiding warranties. And so this, um, city management through finance and all of this have, have found the funding to, to achieve this cost overrun, um, which is in, outlined in the M O U. And so we bring this to you, before you today, so that we can, as they mentioned before in public comment, uh, have our first special needs field, and then by turfing the minors' field and the majors' field is as, as it allows for progression and skill set, even if you have a special need. It will assist for, um, the games of Texas when they're here, if we have bad weather, which we often do in July, uh, we'll at least have operating fields during that time, um, and hopefully we won't. Um, but, um, so we bring this for you before, before you today, and if you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
Do we know why the vendor didn't tell us that way at the beginning?
It, it was, it wasn't that the vendor, what we quoted was on the material cost, not, and so not the groundwork, the excavation, the labor, all, all of that layering elements that were included. So when we were getting the quotes for that, they were, we were getting the material, but not, not that, the subgrade surface work requirement.
Who came up with the scope of work? Was there an engineer involved, an architect, or something?
Um, the city has been involved with, um, West Brownsville, our engineering department. Where, um, I think our initial scope of work, we were assuming that the existing groundwork would be sufficient for the product, and so we didn't anticipate that cost.
So there wasn't anybody hired to come up with that, is what I'm asking, I guess?
No, not an outside. No, no.
Okay, okay. If there was, maybe you caught that.
Did we do it, or did Wes Brownsville do it?
We, what we did is we worked with Wes to provide them, here's the dimensions of the field, this is what we would need, we, 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 uh, reach out to vendors on what their costs were for it. Uh, we were working on those material estimates and installation, but, uh, we were under the, we were assuming that the groundwork, the existing groundwork was sufficient.
Oh, okay. What, do we know where we're getting the money for this?
Yes, what we're gonna do is make an amendment to the capital outlet program. That's that four hundred thousand dollar fund that we created where we have the kneel house and some equipment pieces. Uh, we anticipate having either reduce, having the equipment eliminated from the budget, which would free up the funding, and/or having excess bridge funds, although we budget four hundred thousand, we're seeing, uh, overages from the bridge funds, so we would also take from the overage potentially and amend the capital outlet program.
What was the equipment that you're gonna eliminate?
We have, it, it's, it's separate departments. We have smaller equipment items, some, we have a couple of vehicles and, uh, some equipment pieces. I, I don't have the exact list with me, but it, it was about two hundred thousand dollars worth for the kneel house and two hundred thousand dollars for equipment.
So what's gonna happen on the kneel house?
That's still gonna get done. That, that would stay on there. We would defer the equipment, and then also look at the, the yearly, the mid-year budget performance, and we would anticipate having some excess bridge funds that we could allocate to the project.
You said that, equipment and the kneel house. So are you saying now that you're not gonna touch the money for the kneel house?
Correct.
So you're gonna leave it in place?
Right, right.
Two hundred thousand.
Correct, yeah.
So as I understand, same scope of work, just that it, it takes into account costs that you didn't anticipate, which is the subsurface or the groundwork, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Motion to, oh, I'm sorry.
I got one. Exhibit A, so the one hundred thousand for the special needs restroom, has that already been built?
It has not been built due to the timing of the, the seasons and the existing work that's been done. Um, Noble Builders has committed to doing that. There, there is the letter that they've submitted, and I don't know, since we spoke last, you know, have they given us an updated timeline? It should start in the next couple of weeks. It should be done by, by the end of the year.
Is it a pledge or a commitment?
It is a commitment.
Okay, so they're, they're hooked on that?
Yes.
What about the other two items there? You're, you have that money in the bank?
Is that the eleven thousand dollars and this fifty-eight thousand?
Is that in your bank account?
We have fifty-eight thousand that was donated to us by, by a private donor, and we had eleven thousand that we raised, uh, through barbecue fundraisers.
Nice. Okay, so that's, uh, something you already have, right?
Correct. So how far along are you in the project? Is it just gonna start, or?
So we phased as much as we could, um, before the twenty eighteen season. We started, we started right after a little bit of that. Uh, we did a lot, and then, uh, we only got so much done, and then so after this, no, it was the twenty nineteen season. So we just finished, uh, we've done the batting cages, we've done the removal of the, um, swing sets, uh, the, the parking lot and alley paving is done. So a lot of the in-kind parts that the, the city has committed to, we, we've done those. Uh, we removed the basketball court. Um, so there's a lot of components that are, it, it's definitely been, uh, moving. Improving the drainage was a very, very big issue in that area, um, and so that was achieved with the parking lot and alley, uh, parking improvements.
So I, what I don't understand is, is exhibit C has three proposals, but none of them amount to the, amount that the city would be liable for, or for the cost.
I apologize, I should've explained that a little bit more clearly.
Yeah, I had an issue with that too. I was trying to figure out how, what the number was.
Okay, so that, I guess it was, it was, that was outlined in A, and so the, the, the requested amount, um, let me see how that, um, so B C I C has funded three hundred thousand of it. Uh, the initial need was six seventy-six less the sixty-nine thousand, the, the cash sponsorships and the Hernandez Foundation, and so that brings us down to the three oh seven nine forty amount that is left over.
Okay, so then, but of the three, um, none of the three proposals amount, or the, two of them are over, way over the three hundred thousand, and then one of them is way below, but it doesn't cover all the needs that you have, so which one are you gonna go with?
We were gonna go with the Helles on the, and I have six oh four, is that right? Do you know?
Are they the original vendor? Helles is the original vendor?
That six oh four did not include the, uh, the concrete pads and the fencing.
Okay, so is it six eleven?
Six eleven.
Okay.
Concrete patch.
The correct amount is six eleven seven ninety.
Is, is Helles the original vendor that said that they needed to have the turf done according to their specs?
It was, the bid, the, what was sought out was by square footage of the materials for this project. It, the project wasn't submitted to each vendor initially to, to get the, the estimated scope and product for the grant.
Okay, so what I'm wondering is that Helles knows how to do it according to the way the vendor wants it?
That is correct, yes.
Right, okay. So we don't have any more, whatever they call these, add-ons?
But I'm still confused. So is six eleven though just the engineering costs to do all the grading and stuff?
That's turnkey. No, it's everything with, it's the product, the labor, the groundwork, and the turf, all three fields.
Okay, including what B C I C is gonna pay, like the picnic tables?
Correct, yes.
So now, but we still have a four, two or four thousand, right? Cause initially it was six oh nine, and so now we're up to six eleven?
Yes.
So who's gonna cover that difference?
I'll, we can double check the numbers and make sure that that, that amount, and I apologize if I, if that oversight was on my, my fault.
You have one at six seventy-six, and then it looks like on B, it's at six fifty-six.
We'll confirm that the six eleven is the most recent.
Six eleven is correct.
Okay.
Six eleven is correct.
Is that the total cost in, overall?
Yes.
Total cost? So six seventy-six is off? Six seventy-six was over?
Six seventy-six, um, probably includes other things, like, uh...
That was the to, that included, the six seventy-six nine forty includes the, all the items for the Miracle T-ball field. It includes turfing the infield area of the minors and major fields and fifty thousand for a special needs playground. Um, so, um, the, there's a slight difference, cause what I have on there is six oh four for all three fields, which it should be six eleven. So that's a, about a six thousand dollar discrepancy.
So who's gonna sign the contract though with Helles, or?
West Brownsville Little League will.
So, and that's where I also get confused with the structure. So y'all are liable for all of the improvements to the park, even though it's on city property?
We, yep, we're, we are paying for, uh, the entire cost with your help, of course. So, uh, we are signing the contract with the company. Uh, Mr. Brennall, that's such a good idea.
Yeah, well, the attorneys also reviewed the, so we're still the owners of the field. West Brownsville Little League is going to engage them directly, but we still have the partnership through the MOU with West Brownsville Little League as a nonprofit entity.
So, what are y'all getting in return for all the, other than the use of the facilities? It's like, you know, I just don't get it. You're putting in, you're going to make yourselves responsible for the loan?
Well, we're, yes, that's correct. We're making ourselves responsible for the loan, I guess for the love of the kids. I mean, we've been doing this for a very, very long time, but we have the funds now, assuming that you all approve us. We have the funds to cover the six eleven. So, with your approval, we will have, we will put that behind us. We've already allocated all the funds that we need for the entire project to finish. As Damaris said earlier, we have been working little by little on steps of what the city could do for us, like they put in some sidewalks. The drainage was a really big deal that they fixed. The middle of the, the middle of the park would completely flood when there was any kind of, any kind of rain whatsoever. And so, that really, really hurt, you know, just the vision of what it looked like. So, the drainage was a big thing. That took a while. And then, I believe we were the only park in the city that didn't have paved parking, you know? I mean, if you can believe that. We had Caliche in the back forever, and so finally, the city came in to do that for us. And so, that was kind of the big portion of what they've already done, the drainage fixing and the parking lot. There were some other minor things that we've done, like fixing the dugouts. The dugouts were really hot, and so they kind of put in some mesh to give them some windows, some minor things. But the things that are still pending, or the biggest thing, are the fields. And we have a deadline that we have to, last year, we were going to, we were about to start everything last year, and our season started. Our season usually starts in the month of April every year. And so, when the season was about to start, we said, well, we got to stop everything and wait for the season to end, and then we have All-Stars, and then we have other teams from other cities coming to play, so we had to just stop everything. And we're at that point again, to where if we don't start here in the next few weeks, we're going to have to stop again for a whole another year to restart again at some point after the next season ends. So, we have some urgency at this point to get it approved. I sent the contract over to Mr. Brennall, who sent it, I guess, to legal. So, we're waiting to get your approval on that, and if we need to sign it, we'll sign it. If you all sign it, we all sign it, but we're prepared to sign it. We've already met with our banker, who is Alvia Real at IBC Bank. He's also one of our ex-presidents, and he has already approved us for whatever funding we need so that we can meet the terms of our BCIC grant. So, we've already got that approved. And matter of fact, I just got a text message from Josh Mahia from BCIC saying, what's the status? So, hopefully, I can give him some good news.
Yeah, we reviewed the item, and we don't have any issues with that. We did ask that West, you know, look, have that looked over by their counsel. We can, we can give legal representation to the city's interests. But I, we did, we don't have any issues with the contract, but we did ask that you all review with your own personal or corporate legal.
We can, and our concern is that it is a city park. At the end of the day, if West Brownsville Little League didn't exist anymore, I mean, you guys get to keep the asset that we helped to put together. So, at the end of the day, it's, I mean, it's like somebody buying a house for you and saying, walking away and say you can have the house. You know, and, and we're not going anywhere.
Been there sixty years.
We've been around sixty-seven years, and we're devoted to what we do.
I actually played there when there was real dugouts. They would flood all the time.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Action item number eleven. Consideration and action to award a term contract for the lease of vehicles to TIPS contract number one ninety-four zero two for fifty-five vehicles for city departments in the amount of two million ninety-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars with sixty cents.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Elizabeth Walker in the office of the city manager. Ah, you thought you'd get away safely. You want to introduce yourself?
My name is Steven, I'm with the finance department.
And we are here to follow up on the authorization that you gave to city staff in the month of August regarding the approval of a fleet replacement program, in which it is, you may remember, we developed a system and a financial model to replenish approximately two hundred vehicles in the city's white fleet. These are the light-duty trucks essentially across most departments.
All right, so we went ahead, after we did that exercise, we went ahead and budgeted four hundred and ten thousand. The actual amount that it came out to was three hundred and eighty, and this is including some additional add-on. Because we got a good deal, we were able to add on some additional features such as backwell arms, spray in liners, platform running boards, and crossbed toolboxes. And we were able to get these at a ten percent discount to MSRP. So, we went ahead and added that in and still stayed within budget. In the interest of transparency, the lease payment portion is, it's a point ten percent of the cost of the vehicle, and the fixed interest is calculated based on the three-year treasury bill rate plus three point five percent. So, that would amount to about five point two percent right now. And the lease service charge of four hundred is for the disposal of vehicles for us. Basically, that's a resale fee when they dispose of them for us. And this is a schedule of basically a mix of what we're getting and what the quoted price was, with the annual payment coming out to three hundred and eighty thousand.
So, city staff asked for your approval this evening on this item, and it would enable us to lease the first portion of our fleet replacement program. It's fifty-five units that would be delivered in approximately January.
Do you have any motions?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Action item number twelve. Consideration and action to purchase eight vehicles for city departments. Bid number POV dash forty-zero dash zero seven nineteen in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars.
Again, Elizabeth Walker in the office of the city manager. And so, this is the second component. Over the ten-year life cycle of the fleet replacement program, we lease vehicles in years one and presumably in year six, but we supplement the replacement program with purchases strategically. So, it calls for, over the ten-year period in year one, that we would purchase eight vehicles. So, toward that end, city sought sealed bids. We advertised that in the newspaper, we posted it on a big bit tech, and we individually notified local vendors. We received back three responses, and staff recommends to award to Grapevine Dodge as the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars. This amount is budgeted, and it is within budget.
So, no local vendors tried to sell us?
Charlie Clark was one of the bidders, I believe, but they were super high.
Yes, sir. Of the three, one was a local.
But they didn't, so they only bid on the actual car and none of the accessories, right?
Correct, sir, they only submitted a partial response.
Any motions? We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Stand and adjourn.